I wasn't ever pro town in all those years and you don't see it. It's not my thing, but I'll do my very best.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And you're next.
Alra?
Yes. Protestants is absent and excused. Fisher?
Yes.
Griffin?
Here.
Cover?
Here.
Michelle?
Present.
Keel is absent and excused. Ewing? Derek? The Brigadier. Tyson has a report coming late. Okay. Um, we're down to approval of the minutes. Does someone have a motion for that? I'm looking for a minute. Okay, second. One second. All right. You have any questions you want to begin? I don't have, no. How about you, what? Anybody else? Zach?
Yep, uh, on page seven. Outdoor lighting should not exceed thirty-three thousand four hundred kelvin units. That should be outdoor lighting color temperature should not exceed three thousand four hundred kelvin. So after lighting, that color temperature.
Any questions? In you or you have more, Zach?
No, that was it.
Okay. All right, then. Alra? Yes. Michelle?
Yes.
Thank you. Cover?
Yeah.
Griffin?
Yeah.
Fisher?
Yeah.
And we're down to pre-arranged. Do you have any of those folks? All right. Then we should take a look at the agenda and are we ready?
We'll double check those online.
Oh, I'm sorry. Pre-arranged still.
Oh, sorry. Sorry.
Okay. Okay. Down to approval of the agenda. I moved to approve of the agenda presented. And a second? One second. Okay. Yeah? Was that stuff you have up for discussion? It wasn't what happened, I looked over there.
Yeah. So I would like to take item two and six off. I do have some questions about those. Off the consent agenda and for the mission business. That would be the way contracts and social district. So I guess I'll offer that from.
Did you get that, Neil? All right. So N two will become the way contract and N three will become the social district. That work. So we've been so. Fine, what's that?
Yeah, me too.
Okay. Does anybody want to make that motion?
We just, we agreed to that.
Oh, okay. All right. So can we? Can we go ahead? Alra?
Yes.
Griffin? Yeah. Cover?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Fisher? Yes. Anybody have time for the vendors? That being?
Yeah, uh, under consent agenda, the old payroll line for getting paid money and adopting. Not who I've done.
Okay. Anybody else? No public comments? You see no non-arranged in a building. Is there anybody who wants to speak under non-arranged that is dialing in or phoning in? Jim? Grace? Any of you wish to speak? No? Okay. That takes care of non-arranged. We had communications in our packet and we all received. For those who didn't get our packet, upcoming meeting list, letter complimenting farmers market manager and the investment policy board. I was thrilled to see that letter about the market. That was just really amazing to the city policy.
Yeah.
Very complimenting.
Yeah. And then very appreciative of the labor job.
Yeah. Okay. And the other, we have a report and Tim is first.
What's over here doing?
Good. How are you?
Good. So the front is obviously two, three. That was four. If there's any questions, I could be able to go. Nothing yet. Any questions? All right. People always ask me this and I don't get to see it because I'm usually walking or driving by farmers market. They have the signs that say they're parking on Fridays or Saturdays. Does that list the seasons or is that something we ought to cover up or remove so people aren't confused that they should be parking there on Tuesdays or Saturdays from now till spring?
I believe it does say may throw.
Okay. I had a question about the water. Were twelve of them defective? Yes, so the, there were seventeen totals that were replaced with the walker boxes from going into the house. And we replaced all the curb boxes with them and then there's twelve more defective. There's a spot at the bottom that there's a notch out. So when it goes up into the lower half, so to speak, it keeps it from moving so you can turn it on and off. Well, that piece is gone. It was never, they never, it never got attached to it. So now it takes turn and then they heave up and down, obviously with the winter months. So there's a potential of getting coming out and being disconnected from it. So I called manufacturer, they're going to replace everything. I got a quote from M K. We're actually going to piggyback off of another job to take care of it. And I'm just waiting here. I talked to the gentleman today from rep from the company and wait here back from his company. So we're going to have to dig the hole back up. Well, at a case, we have a company, we're not paying for it though. The manufacturer? Yes, they're going to pay for all of it. The work, the backfill and everything. All right, are we having to tear up any sidewalks or other things we just put in? Nope. All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Do you have any information for us?
Um, just a couple of things. We did get some of the asphalt done with them on the streets. Hudson, yeah, Alpine, we've got a fire department behind the eyeglass place. I'm sure it is off of Main Street. That was taken care of in the nick of time because I was kind of nervous with the weather and everything. But Steve came through, which is really good. We had a heater that was in Capitol that we did get a few months earlier, a month earlier. And we did get that successfully put up in house and saved some money on that. We have sledge pumps that are in our diesters that we took care of ourselves and replaced the tubing in it. One will be a D S F. Finally got wrapped up the other day. And the E P W will have new hire as of between. So we're not back to full staff yet, but we'll get there.
That's good. So. Any really else, have anything else? Thanks for coming.
All right, thanks.
And Michelle?
Hello, can you hear me?
And it's your turn.
Excellent, excellent. How is council this evening?
Good.
Yay. Excellent. Okey dokey. Before I go into any update, do you have any questions for me? I don't see any hands and I don't hear anything, so I'll start. All right. So the thirty forty-five Broad Street Committee did meet on November fourth. They discussed elements of the revised parking concept plan that Common Sale had provided previously, but didn't, the committee didn't have a chance to look it over prior to the meeting. Neither did staff and so they held a specific, a special meeting just to have a chance to go over all of that. And they came out with a, with consensus on a number of items, items from parking to density to building scale, massing, et cetera. Those comments have been provided to the developer and we will be meeting with the developer on the eighteenth Friday this week to have a sit down to go over all those comments. Review a revised concept that they have done based on that feedback from the November fourth meeting. And we'll have a chance to review and discuss the schedule going forward. Excuse me, I'm so sorry. I'm anticipating a good meeting, so they are going to be providing that revised concept and their schedule on or before this Wednesday so that I can get it out to the committee and they get a chance to look at it before the meeting. Did you have any questions regarding the information for Corman Farms and their potential? We're still waiting for a decision from them, but I should say, and as soon as we hear from them, council will be updated.
I believe that there, this is the favor. Do you think it's likely that there will be a request to commit?
I think so. Just based on the limited conversations that we've had. I don't think these amounts came as a great shock or that or that would have set them back on their heels and made them reconsider. I think they're just getting their, all their ducks in a row before making a formal request. Yep. On a little bit more of a somber note. The Dexter, the city of Dexter and the Dexter business community did suffer a tremendous loss this weekend. Dr. Solomon, the owner of Dexter Oral Surgery and Implant Center was in an automobile accident. He and his wife did not survive that accident. I remember the first time Dr. Solomon contacted my office when he was first making the decision to move into Dexter. And he was just a wonderfully warm and nice gentleman. He, he knew, he had definitely a business mind, had the, knew what questions to ask. We worked through all of the requirements that he'd need and then his business opened up and he just took off. It's truly a loss and I definitely will miss him. And that's an understatement is compared, considering that I only knew him from a distance. His family, his friends and others in this community knew him far better and feel the loss tremendously. I have no other words tonight, so unless you have any other questions, I'm done.
I can say this hand out, Michelle.
A question about Corman Farms. Are they still agricultural operations on the property?
They still, to the best of our knowledge, have agricultural operations on their property, yes.
Or that would require some amendments towards zoning ordinance to accommodate that if they ever want to change it or expand it. Right?
Yes, we would have to do some tweaks to our ordinance. That is a conversation that I had with Megan, excuse me, at the onset when they first asked to speak with us. And we have not brought that, brought any specific recommendations or made any changes in the current update because we didn't want to jump the gun, not knowing what they wanted to do yet.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Hi, Michelle, it's Jamie. I have a couple of questions. On thirty forty-five Broad Street, I have, I don't know what was made a presentation with planning commission way back when. I was curious to know what the lay of the land is, I guess, in terms of how many one bedroom apartments we currently have in the city of Dexter. I know a lot of, I think more than half of what they're proposing is one bedroom apartment. So I don't know if at some point either the committee or we can somehow relate to them that I would still be curious to know what the number of one bedroom apartments is in Dexter. And so I could have some idea of what percentage increase one bedroom apartments with development is proposing.
I, to be perfectly honest, I don't know how many one bedroom apartments we have in the city. We could probably go through and figure out how many apartment units there are. Breaking down by the number of bedrooms is going to be a deeper dive and would take a substantial amount of time. But I can at least get you the number of apartment units within the city.
Okay, yeah, and I wouldn't, yeah, I wouldn't necessarily want to burden staff with answering that question. I would expect though, somebody who's proposing a new residential development or a new business development for themselves, having an understanding of that. I would think that would have been part of their market analysis if that's what they would call in the world of residential. So you could relate to them and see what, I mean, you're welcome, obviously, to come up with your own answer, but I would be curious for that to come up with something.
Okay.
Thanks. And then in terms of the modifications that were made, I think there were some comments, whenever that initial presentation was or some of the initial presentations about harmonizing the scale of the development with the natural surroundings. So have any changes to the concept plan been made that address that comment about the scale of the building viewed as being a pressure to build park?
Um. What we have, what the committee has asked for, and you'll see because I will send out the summary of comments, is the committee has asked for a couple of perspectives. One looking on Grand Street from the intersection of Grand and Broad toward Mill Creek Park to get an idea of, from that pedestrian level, what the, what, what the building would look like and its impact on that area. The other perspective, they've asked for two other perspectives. One is similar to the one that Quinn Evans did for Norfolk where they're looking from the Main Street Bridge toward thirty fifty-five Broad Street. And you've got the existing Main Street buildings, the, at that time would have been the proposed one fifty Jeffords Building. And then the outline for scale and massing of the buildings they were proposing. So the committee has asked Common Sale to do that same thing for theirs as well as a perspective from the lower portion of the Mill Creek Park pathway directly below the, the development. So they've got, you've got, again, a pedestrian's perspective looking from about the cemetery over toward one fifty Jeffords, but from that lower trail.
Okay, and you'll be sending that out one day or you'll be sending that out next?
Yes. I'm sorry, did you say sending out questions or sending out the summary?
Oh, the summary, yeah.
The summary, yes, yes. Yep.
Thanks. And then at the planning commission two weeks, was it last week?
Yeah.
The idea or the topic of a second street sort of redesign or something with Wortman and revisioning Second Street. Are you able to provide any summary of what decision was made there or?
So Megan, through Carla Wortman, had come up with what she calls a plan to plan process. It's a, it's a process by which she can ask certain questions from the planning commission and then get some feedback before going into a full blown proposal and costs. She had come up with a, sort of a draft scope of services that include, you know, a lot of background data review, et cetera. But also for public participation, she had proposed a three day charrette with residents specifically along the corridor, adjacent to the corridor and just anybody, stakeholders in general within the community. And there were a couple of comments questioning why we even needed to do this since we've already updated our plan. But what, what we reminded the planning commission was during that master plan update closer toward, we're about three quarters of the way complete, if I remember correctly, the, is when we got that, that storage district or storage proposal and then got feedback from Second Street residents that were very opposed to it. We did not at that time have the budget available to do a more in-depth study of Second Street. And so one of the things the planning commission baked into their master plan was an implementation schedule. And in that implementation schedule was a, basically a sub-area study or sub-area plan for Second Street to look at uses and, excuse me, building types, not for the purpose of a streetscape plan. That's something that's more designed focused. This was, this is more of a, a future land use study and understanding what does the community really want for Second Street. Not everybody liked the idea of a three day charrette, much less, much less a taking on the study, but the consensus of the, or the majority of the, the planning commission did want to move forward. But they've asked Megan to come up with a, an alternative proposal or two for engaging the public. Excuse me. So she will come back with that in December and we will review it with the planning commission again.
Okay, thanks. Do you have a follow-up and I have some other questions?
I just want to add two things to what Michelle said, that's okay, Michelle.
Thank you, yes, please.
We did, when we talked about the shred, it would also be the property owners, not, not just the residents. So the all the property in our corridor. Just totally slipped my eye there, what I was saying. Oh, we talked about how we have the ability to set expectations from the outset of certain things that would not be possible so that we don't have residents, you know, have, just so that we set the expectations for the residents when we're talking about coming up with any sort of alternative plan.
If I, I'll piggyback on that if it's okay, please. One of the things that Commissioner Phillips had brought up is that if we just go to the residents and the general public, what we're most likely going to hear is that they only want to see single family residential. Excuse me. And that corridor has a mix of uses. Good, bad or indifferent, that is the lay of the land and has been for many decades. If we were to future, future plan or master plan, all of the properties to only be single family, you do a few, a couple of things. You instantly make, well, you have the potential to make a number of properties non-conforming if you also rezone those properties to only single family. You also limit the potential or the tax base that the city has and some of the few remaining industrial properties other than what's in the industrial park. So it's, it's something that we have to be careful of. It takes, the planning process has to be very thorough before we just downzone certain properties or downplan, I should say, certain properties to be just single family as opposed to what it currently might be, whether that's a multiple family designation or an industrial designation.
Thanks, Michelle. I just had one.
I'm sorry, can I have one more thing to that? Michelle, that I thought was really important in that discussion was that if we, if it did turn all single family, it really reduced the walkability of the neighborhood and our downtown in general. Because if, you know, it eliminates the possibility to have a coffee shop there or something else besides just another road home.
Thank you. Nope, good, thank you.
Thanks, Michelle. My last question is just about the grocery store act that I made three weeks ago. I think you were having a meeting and Matthew was going to be at it. I forget exactly when it was or what it was about. I just didn't know if that came up or did any update if that happened.
No, we have, we have not had a chance to schedule that with the Ann Arbor Foundation. But I will tell you that I am working with a, an interested party or interested parties on the possibility of finding a space in downtown to develop a product that is similar to Agricole or Argus in Ann Arbor, I think it's in Ann Arbor, Agricole's in Chelsea. So we are, but the timing, it seems to be good. So from your comment to, to this entity. So I'll keep you in, updated as best I can, but we're working on it.
I'll toss you a bit of information, Michelle. In Stockbridge, they just put a very small, the town square is there. They just put in a real small grocery of just organics and it, it looks really charming and I, it didn't fit into my schedule to try it out, but it's happening in other places, so maybe here too?
Yes, definitely. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Anybody have a board commission or another kind of report they want to get, Zach?
Uh, Cap Dart met the first Thursday. We did get a presentation from the Semcot Trail Tour. The D N R Trail Person was also there remotely. That's a nice thing, Zoom. Let's see. Chelsea's a bit busy. They have submitted materials to become certified as a trail town. It looks like they are a couple of years away. They've got a pass, we're just working on a community center that's going to be wrapping up the report here soon. And also they're working on establishing a proper trail head with facilities and support structures for that here soon. The Dexter Area Fire Department, a couple of quick updates. I was not at either. It was a special meeting and they changed the time of the meeting. But the department, the board rather, has approved purchase around roughly eighty thousand dollars for a truck for the chief to use. We don't have a policy for the actual use and how it can be used and all that type of stuff. That's supposed to be coming soon, I guess. The board also authorized submission to purchase a type one ambulance. We're not going to get it the earliest until next year. That's going to be an extra two hundred eighty-eight thousand dollars for the purchase. We didn't have it budgeted. We're going to figure out where the money comes next year. And the draft budget that the D F D, or that the chief put out includes the additional six full-time firefighters. So going from twelve to eighteen and adding a full-time administrative assistant. So this is your heads up, there could likely be very large increases coming in our D A F D's funding here. Really big. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Oh, Michelle? I see, I see the hand, okay.
Yeah. I was just going to follow up with Zach in council. Grace had let me know, because she's been attending the Cap Dart meetings, that this Trail Town designation was discussed. And so Justin let us know that Dexter already has Trail Town designation because of our connection with the border to border and Iron Bell Trail.
That's good.
Yep, it is good. That's it.
Hey, anyone else? Is there anybody who has another report here on the list? Yeah. None of those have been recorded, okay.
Yeah, so the, the big news is the election is over. Things went really smoothly on election day. We got a really good turnout, about seventy-five percent, which is, which is really good for a residential election.
Nice.
Both of the proposals passed for the unofficial election results. So we're, we're just waiting on final certification now. But for, for the, well, for the last election in which will be a, a election commission member.
That's true.
I finally remembered to say thank you to the election, the election commission.
I finally remembered to say thank you to the election, the election commission.
My brother. For those of you who don't know, we get, Ray Tallin and I have to go with Justin and he directs and we do and he drop paper on the floor. A lot of lists of numbers and so when I got on, because last time I thought, I didn't really work, I just kind of sat there and watched and Josh was there and I just did it. So anyway, that's why I'm laughing, was it? Anything else from you, any other news?
There's, there's one other piece of news.
Okay.
Uh my wife is pregnant. So. Uh the the term of date is May.
Oh, nice.
So um.
Soon go around the days, oh, nice, I always love to hear about that.
Congratulations.
So I'll be keeping up pretty up to date as, as we closer about, you know, plans for for um. A little bit of time off.
What you'll make.
Okay, I have just one question. I'll follow up, okay, you know, I had a resident who reached, who reached out to me, he wanted to know. Uh about how much money we spend on the farmer's market. I don't expect you to have that number.
So I believe the budget for the farmer's market is four thousand dollars.
And what does that go towards?
Uh so then that goes towards advertising. The different events that they have, um so like they'll do. Yeah, like the costume contest and like prizes for that, uh they do like a Mother's Day painting event. Uh or they'll buy little um like planters and then kids can come in and paint those. Uh and then every Saturday they do music and so they they give a small statement to the artists that perform. And 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 sorry, that 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 does not include the farmer's market manager, Sam.
Okay.
I think we budgeted six thousand for that.
And that, is that person now only doing that or we, that was one of them?
Yeah, so, so.
So that's just the farmer's market portion of that?
I do, that's just the farmer's market portion, so so she's, her official title is Recreation Coordinator. And so she's handling the farmer's market, um she handles Paint Baxter. Um our community garden manager is gonna be leaving, this is this was for last year, um so. The Recreation Coordinator is gonna be taking that over and then I think she's also going to help with the Easter egg hunt, uh for Parks and Rec. Um and I'll see what, whatever else I can get, get our assistance with.
Has there been a discussion of parks and recreation about post-owning design work on Mill Creek Park North until we know how big the fire station parking lot's gonna be there?
There, there has been a discussion about the the. Pop, the different possibilities of what could happen with A140 if if fire stations went longer there. But there, there has been a real push from Parks and Rec to to keep moving forward with with the playground project. Um and so one of the things that I actually have a Parks and Rec meeting tomorrow night and that is on the agenda for discussion, the the playground. And one of the things that we'll be talking about is the Spark Grant.
How much is that worth?
So the the minimum application for a Spark Grant for outdoor recreation is a hundred thousand and the maximum is one million. And um the first round of applications are due by December nineteenth. And that's for a pot of, I think, fifteen million. And then in these, I think there's one, there's two more application periods, one in the spring and one in the summer, each for twenty-five million. But if you don't get in the first round, you don't apply for the second, if you don't get the second, you don't apply for the third, and so. You know, this is, this is really. This pot of money could potentially need a lot of, we could check a lot of the boxes for for the spring. For that project.
Thank you, I just want to add one thing to that, so I also said on the Parks and Rec and in the short term that I've done on it. One thing that's come up over and over is the desire to have public restroom more than the porta potty. And so that is something that has just always kind of been set aside saying, well, depending on what happens at A140, that might be incorporated into that building. For whatever that building is being used, so. There, yes, there definitely is an awareness of the uncertainty and trying to incorporate that, because otherwise I think if they, Parks and Rec, they're way, they would want to be putting a restroom. Specifically in the park, but they're trying to. Be efficient in terms of the use of resources and not doubling up if there could be something else.
Anyone else? Um, well, I told you that when I leave, she wants to do the extended agenda, she wants that job. It's not a job, it never was anything official, so you're gonna have to work that out with your new group, but tonight, I'm still here and there you go.
Well, I believe, I believe we approved the four items on the concept agenda, consideration of bills and payroll amount of eight hundred and twenty-three thousand one hundred sixty-five dollars and sixty-five cents. Resolution to establish Fund 596 rubbish collection fund. Resolution to establish Fund 661 motor pool fund, allocation of public safety facilities interest on one million dollars and continuation of social, oh, sorry, and that's it. Sorry.
A second. Good, I, you only, I'll just correct, you read one hundred, eight hundred and twenty-three thousand one hundred and sixty-five.
I did.
But it's one hundred and eighty-five.
I'm doing it, because I'm too good to start here. For the record, I didn't ask, I didn't say, I said I had been doing it when you weren't here.
So there you go.
I'll do better.
Yeah, Alra?
Yes.
Michelle?
Stay.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, moving on, we have no unfinished business, but we do have new business. This is, is this the item that, let me just turn this over. Zach, um two subjects went through the bottom, is that correct in terms of memory?
Yeah, so, so, so um M1 is discussion of funding sources agreements.
Okay, do you have, um, let me give us a little introduction to what we're doing here?
Um so that this item was included as requested by Councilwoman Michelle. So I.
We, we could defer to you.
Well, I brought this up because back in August, we voted to put a. Item on the ballot, we also all kind of did the head shake that we would also pursue additional funding and so my, my. Thought was to get an update, if there wasn't an update, provide staff with direction or authority so that they can contact these folks, or we've been authorized by council to ask you for money. That, that was my intent with this.
Yeah, and then. Earlier this year, um I had tried to be handy with Representative Walmer's office to to look for funding for. Um the playground project and. His office has been fairly unresponsive to inquiries. Um knowing that Representative Dingle was gonna be running for our, the new um seat that Dexter would be included in. Um I reached out to her office and she said, well, I'm not your rep yet, you should kind of represent Walmer's office. Okay, so um. So now that the unofficial results are in and Representative Dingle is now our, our, our rep. Uh they have to go to the research back up here to see if there's any potential funding. Federal resources that we might be able to access. And uh I, I have not heard of any grants, potential grant sources. Where we could check those boxes for public safety facilities. Um if anybody's aware of those, I'm more than happy to dig in and and, you know, investigate and, you know, try to build applications for those. But I, I have not heard of anything of this, yeah.
One thing to just keep your eye on, um I don't, so. The International Association of Fire Chiefs endorsed legislation introduced in the US Senate. That would provide federal funding to maintain and build the fire stations across the nation, so to my knowledge, it's not passed, it was introduced August first. Um it's called the Fire Station Construction Grants Act and it would create one billion dollars through FEMA. To modify, upgrade, and construct fire EMS facilities nationwide. I have no idea what the schedule of this, how long it takes. But I think when I read this some time ago, it specifically was just talking about, you know, the average age of fire stations across the nation being fifty years or older. I mean, just some, somehow citing, just there's a lot of really old infrastructure, particularly as it relates to fire stations. So, something you and I know.
And Congress has also gotten back the, the game of earmarks, we don't call it earmarks anymore. Called uh community-directed spending. So even if there's not a grant, working with them, this thing has been in town, she's attended a lot of construction forum meetings, so she's, she's aware. As I mentioned previously, Mr. Peters, Senator Peters' office was also responsive. And there is, money is available, not necessarily in grant form, but the state right now. Um which we're in a weird spot because we have all new representative and senator for our area. But it wouldn't be bad to get in the first day. It's a good thing to ask for money for. And I'll, my understanding was, there's also opportunities to use some ARBA monies towards a portion of it. Yeah, clever how you do it, but the biggest thing. ARBA.
Okay.
Uh I think we spent all of ours already.
We, 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 we have allocated it towards the Second Street project and potentially the um water tower, uh rain guard project.
Uh the staff on the motion authorized any contact, or are you comfortable doing it?
I'm, I'm comfortable with it.
Any more comments?
More than Armstrong might have some idea, they'll work to reach that goal. What I was gonna say is look at other communities that have recently built. Facilities and see if, we can find out if any of them have been funded through anything.
That might be available again. I'll say. Okay, moving on. Uh down to noting that was pulled, Zach, you want to give an introduction?
Yeah, so my, my quick question was, there appear to be two different agreements in there. Is that by purpose or by accident? And are they supposed to be the same because I found a word in the front that was different in one document to the other?
Uh they, they are different by intent. Uh one is for the community vector and one is for the door to the service.
Okay. The one on page seventy-four. Page one, that ought to be corrected to state statute, not a state statute, I don't think statutes give us neighborhood authorities to do stuff. I did have a question, have these been reviewed by council, SEL?
Uh so, so I, I believe these are the exact agreements that you see every year for the last. Nine years.
Yeah, were, were those reviewed by council then?
I do not know. I have to, I have to talk with the city for you.
We don't run everything by, you know, do we?
Not, not, not everything.
Yeah, okay, just wondering.
Are these intended to be recordable documents?
No, I mean, these are just a- annual. Under- understandings between the city and. And way.
Okay.
We've, we've never reported them, we've executed them, but we don't file them, we can't hear anything.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you need the motion? I want to approve um FY twenty-two, twenty-three wage contracts. Your second? Griffin, yes, Michelle's?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah. Yes. Let's talk about the social district. And who but? You pulled it up, right, Zach?
Yeah.
Michelle, you want to give us a little idea of what you had an idea?
Okay, so for the last couple of years, the city and DDA have operated a social district. And the social district was a. I'll call it an economic development tool that the state Liquor Control Commission actually came up with and the legislature put it into law. That allows a community, especially a downtown district. To establish. A district where people can. Get an alcoholic beverage from a specifically licensed or specially licensed. Uh establishment and they can take that. Beverage in a very specific um container and then. Enjoy, if you will, the um, the. Community in which, or the downtown district in which that establishment is located. This was designed to help the food and beverage service businesses navigate the economic uncertainties that resulted during COVID. As you'll recall, businesses like restaurants, bars, lounges, things like that. Were, for a period of time, closed down other than for carryout and then when they were allowed to reopen. They could only open to serve fifty percent capacity. So this, um, this unique creative um tool allowed some businesses. In many communities across the state, including ours, to continue to operate and to stay in business. Our social district does not close any roads like some districts. We operate our social district and the common area, which is where the, the beverages can be consumed. To function on the sidewalks adjacent to the different businesses. Um we're one of ninety-five established social districts in the state, but we have always done it just as a seasonal, just in the winter months. Um and my initial request um on your consent agenda was just to open it again from December first through April thirtieth. So Zach, you're pulling it and asking for more information is kind of timely. Because last night or yesterday morning, I received an email from one of our participating businesses, Erratic Ales. And they have asked that I forward their request to council and that is for you to consider operating it all year long. It um. They think that one of the reasons in the past, there was a tent in the DQ parking lot, but that doesn't happen anymore. But it's not like we need that in order to operate the district. Our community, like others, um they believe that downtown businesses benefit the most when people are likely to be out. And they do that more in the winter, or I'm sorry, in the, in the warmer months. Dexter's competing with other communities that do have a social district during the nicer months like Chelsea and Ann Arbor. Options could include restricting the days or the hours. The value is not only for the businesses that serve alcohol, but also for those businesses that people will visit and shop. And Deb and her husband Brian Schroder asked that we also consider uh social media as a method to promote. Not just the establishments that are participating, but also through the chamber in the city. And they thank you for your consideration. Do you have any questions that I can answer for you regarding the social district?
Yeah, so that's, that's my first one is, is about expanding it, I'm comfortable doing it year-round, but it's definitely gonna get more use. Outside of the freezing time. Let's see, I did have a question, we have the parking area between Jeffords Building and the bank that shows a little kind of lost light that goes out there. Uh that doesn't connect to any of the establishments, I was wondering if there'd be value in keeping that or eliminating it, it just kind of seems weird, it's there.
Um it's there because that's where cars are and um since there aren't any businesses that wrap around Jeffords. It allows people to get their beverage, consume it, um and be done with it before they get to their car.
Okay, does that pose any challenges for posting the boundary signs?
It has not been, it wasn't last year. I don't presume it would be a difficulty this year. Um I will also. Um, I will also, based on that question, um, excuse me. I believe, um, Ms. Griffin, you were the one that asked either at the last meeting or the meeting before, if DP, I'm sorry, if the DDA would invest in, um, better signage and, um, their meeting, it's the first meeting they've had since that question was asked, is this Thursday, and that item is on their agenda for consideration.
Second.
Um, page 91, it says activating the district. This may be generic language here, but it continues to describe that there would be temporary shelter as needed, that we provide free Wi-Fi. Is that just generic, we could, or is that something?
It, it should be, um, it should be could, not will.
Um, let's see. How many signs do we, are we posting to, to mark this?
Uh, I believe there are 24 signs, if I remember correctly, Zach.
And have we actually, are, on page 93, it says that we put a trash receptacle next to each sign. Have we been doing that? I don't think we have any trash.
No, it should be that the, the trash receptacles are by each business, and of course, we have, um, um, we have trash bins throughout the downtown. Each qualified business gets a, a trash receptacle. But I don't, I don't, uh, where, I'm not seeing where it says that they're by the signs, but if that's additional, I'm sorry?
Page 93, under setup, says a trash receptacle replaced next to each sign that marks the edge of the common area.
Uh, okay. We may have to get some more, and I can add that to the DDA's, uh, list of consideration. We haven't in the past.
Okay. I didn't remember saying it either.
Before we move on to trash, has trash been an issue, Michelle?
No, no.
Um, under restrooms, on that same page, 93, says that Portage John location will be noted. Is that just within the district, or are we sending folks out to the Portage Johns outside of the social district boundaries?
Um, I think we need to take that line off because the, uh, Portage John, uh, is in Monument Park, and Monument Park is not within the social district. Um, uh, that, uh, council was not comfortable, um, including the park is, uh, into the social district. So I don't think I'd want to put signs up to direct people there.
Be good for folks invited to know where it is, but make sure they don't know. Or no, they can't go. Will the, the new, um, whiskey operation be able to participate on this in the future?
I did ask if they wanted to be involved. They do not think that they will be open. Their build out won't be in, won't be complete in time for them to participate, but they would like to next year.
Right, and my last question is, would it cause any harm to delay and make these changes and bring it back to the next meeting?
Um, the, the, it puts a constraint on DPWU because they're the ones that have to put the signage up, and if we wait until your next meeting, and I do understand why you're asking the question. Um, but if we do wait until the next meeting, um, that puts added pressure on Kurt and his crew to get those signs out. Um, and they're already operating, um.
I, I would say if there's a general head nod about this item, then, and we can start prepping the things to, to be out by December 1st, then the, the formal approval on the 28th wouldn't be a problem.
Yeah, there's, there's a lot of little, not big bits, but a lot of little bits to tidy it up and tighten it up. I, I like the concept. I, I'd like to be private, I guess. So I'd be in favor of a head nod and coming back and finishing it up.
Sure, a lot of heads, man.
I think I would, go ahead. I would support the year-round aspect of it versus just December through April.
So, my question's related to that. I also would support that. But I feel like with the DDA meeting, with some of these items, I mean, is, is there any current in waiting to just renew it, or we might have the ability to make things a little nicer, or make some other changes, or can we do those administratively?
I'm not sure exactly what you're asking, so.
Like the signage and the extra trash cans, like other things that DDA may be contributing money toward that we don't know we have right now?
Hmm-hmm. Um, I, I cannot spend, well, hmm, let's see. That's a, that's, that's, I can't really answer that question. I don't generally spend money, um, the DDA's money without, um, having the discussion with the DDA ahead of time and having, uh, clear authority from them. Um, the city does have a policy, uh, regarding administrative, um, expenditures. Um, that's the one where, um, we can spend up to 5,000 without council approval. I don't know that that's an automatic blanket for the DDA, though. I'd, I, I defer to what Justin thought.
Okay, and then one other question.
Oh, yeah, I, 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 I think if council gives its blessing for the social district to exist, we can, we can work out the details of, of how it looks and and all that administratively.
Okay.
Thank you.
What about adding the other, the tasting room?
The, the, so I, I believe that would have to come back.
So.
Maybe because that's, that's a substantial change to the plan.
If I can make one correction, it's not so much a change to the plan, other than having their name, but you do have to adopt a resolution for the Liquor Control Commission.
For that business, just generally, to be part of the social district?
For that business to be part of the social district. They'll have to get, they, that you've already given approval, um, uh, for their liquor license. That recommendation's already been done. This is a separate approval for the social district, uh, participation and permit.
Wow, so, this map is really small, but, so they're already in the.
They're already in, they're already in the district because the, the common area and boundary goes right past 3126 Broad Street.
So could we add them mid-year with that Liquor Control Commission approval?
Yeah, we, wh- when their build out is done, and presuming that you open the district for whatever the period of time is, they would let me know when they wanted to make their application for their permit. I would bring that to the resolution to you along with the amended, um, um, boundary map because it would just be adding their name, and then the management plan because you had, we'd add their name to it as well.
One second. Anyone else?
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, I'm just looking at an old resolution of the city of Chelsea back in 2021, when they were doing their social district. And they have a, a small subsection in here called revocation designation. It might be nice to, um, leave open an option for us. I can send you the, that text, but I can read it now. I'll send it to you via email. Says the city council may revoke the designation of a commons area if it determines that the commons area threatens the health, safety, and welfare of the public or has become a nuisance. Before revoking the designation of a commons area, the city council shall get notice as required under the Open Meeting Act. MCL 15-261 ET dot, I don't know what that means. And hold at least one public hearing on the proposed revocation. The city shall file the revocation to designation with the Michigan Liquor Control Commission. Maybe this language is already part of the law. Even if it is, I think it would be nice for that to be included in our language.
Okay.
One on that text too. Anybody else? So are we going to wait until another meeting? Or shall we go ahead with the proceed with the approval? Zach?
We postponed the next meeting with recognition that it's part of the system details.
Okay, good. It's okay with me. All set? Pam?
No, it's because.
It could see the one of us.
Yeah, that's what we shall say.
Perfect. Yeah? Aura?
Yeah.
Michelle?
Yes.
Cover?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes. Okay, moving on. We're down with the roof. Zach, you can have a tour again.
Yeah, my apologies for wearing the hat down so low in addition to my paranoid eyes and the intensity of these lights. I got hit upside the head with a hockey stick, not to one goal, and my head was actually dropping with the intensity of the moon coming up here. So my apologies. Uh, I would also say, um, I would like to be able to look across from fellow council members and actually look at them instead of trying to look down the ear hole. Everyone here has lovely ears, but it's hard to, to often communicate. Um, that's all.
Your business. Direct. Funding sources and grants from public safety.
We can. Yeah, we're, we're, we're next.
We're council comments.
Yeah, we're council comments.
All right. Let's see, let's start.
I just had council comments, so.
All right, go for it, Zach. Or go for it, Jamie.
Uh, I just wanted to wish you well and, uh, Mr. President, I know he's not here, but I guess he's officially just not coming back to.
Thank you.
Is he on the screen?
Oh, he just came on.
If you have, I wish you well.
Thank you.
Uh, yeah, I, something similar, just that it's been an honor to be around with you and Paul for these last couple of years and getting to know you in the year before that, and I've learned a lot from both of you and can hope to continue to learn a lot from both of you, um, as long as, you know, he'll talk to me. That's it.
Thank you. Son?
Well, um, first, I want to, um, send my thoughts and prayers to the Solomon family. Um, uh, they have four young children, um, that are needing God's prayers and, um, community support, and beyond that is just, um, tragedy for Dexter. Um, and another kind of note, congratulations to all who are elected and I look forward to working with all of them. And thank you, Donna and Paul, for, um, many, many years of service to this community and almost looking you on council. Thank you.
Um, I do, Ben?
Um, I was excited to hear that I really had turned out Dexter, and I just wanted to give some appreciation to the county of Oakville at Dexter High School who helped, uh, register and encourage our seniors at Dexter High School both.
Um, I guess I get a chance to say that. Bonnie, I want you to know that if you ever, um, and I hope it's in the near future, and you do think about running for office, that we can have a cup of coffee. Um, because I am so impressed with your involvement, and I want you to keep it up, keep up your interest, and I'm going to send a note to Adam, so I'll tell him the same, but. Anyway, and thanks to everybody. I really have loved being on council. Um, and have some times, but it wasn't quite so fun, but it really has been wonderful. And, um, if I hadn't had a lot of different things happen all at once, and if my mom were actually gone, then I certainly would have run again. So watch out, because if she dies, uh, and I can still walk, I might eat, I might try to be back. And I guess that's it. Motion to adjourn.
Oh, I'm sorry, people on, on the screen. The screen is so far over there that I don't see it, but there is a gentleman down there. Don't know his name. You wish to speak, sir?
I would.
All right.
Hello, council. I just wanted to, in this, I'm speaking, let's, let's do it this way. Marie Sherry, um, 7801 Salem Road, Northville, Michigan. Um, I just wanted to say thank you to Donna and to Paul for your service to the city, and it's been a pleasure working with you.
I feel the same way, Mariah, thank you. Anyone else? Anyone here not arranged? Well, this is it. This is it. Motion to adjourn. I move to adjourn. You can't. I certainly can. Can you? She can? Excellent. Then I'll say. Okay. And what's this idea? Oh, no, it's a voice. Oh, is it, was, oh, okay. Goes in favor? Hi. That's opposed. I just missed the, uh, see, I got it halfway.
Good night, all. Donna, it's been a pleasure. Good night, Paul.